Karen it is.
Oh, you have it.
All right, here we go. Meeting is called order. Karen Tepley will lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Karen. Wow. We'll get this. We'll cover that in a few minutes.
Was that on the agenda?
It is now. All right. All right. We'll cover that in a minute for Mr. McGowan. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Once the council's had a moment to review those minutes, entertain a motion to approve.
You need a roll call.
That's right. Go.
Hoppin' John?
Here.
Tepley?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Melby?
Here.
Downs?
Here.
Cairns?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, was the meeting properly noticed?
Indeed it was.
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the minutes once the council's had a moment to review them.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion from Ms. Tepley, is there a second?
I second that.
Second from Ms. Hoppin' John, any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Once the council has reviewed that, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
A motion from Mr. Melby, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Chambers, any discussion of tonight's agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried, agenda is approved. Okay, next we have City Utility Department head reports and concerns. Let's start with Billy Jones.
No concerns.
Can any reports assert?
Uh, no.
Do you want to discuss what we discussed in the hallway when I asked you?
Um, sure.
Sure. So the police department does have or is soon to have a new sergeant?
So we do have a new sergeant. Uh, so yes, we do have a new sergeant. So Sergeant Tyler Bar, our Tyler Bar, has been promoted to sergeant to replace Jared Wilson, who recently accepted the new position as the Community Resource Officer at the, in the school district. Effective, actually Jared's first day with students was today, so he had to take his back-to-school photo for the first time. Report from him was overwhelmingly a positive day with his interaction with the school district and his circulation between the four schools in our district that he got to visit and speak with and talk with teachers and students at all four schools. So off to a positive start and just looking forward right here.
Thank you Billy. Erin Joyce, anything for us tonight?
Not seen.
All right. We'll wait for the microphone to find its way back over there. Mr. Jason Glassburn.
Just a brief update on an agenda item we covered at the last council meeting, which was for the sale of 460 West First Street, and you'd authorized a city administrator and myself to go ahead and take care of that transaction. We believe that the closing for that will be set within the next two weeks, so the closing will actually take place within the next two weeks. We're waiting for the developer to be able to verify some of their construction numbers, and they've done that. They're really excited about moving forward, and so again, we expect the closing within the next two weeks and construction hopefully shortly after that. Their plan is fall, so that's good.
Thank you Jason. Ashley?
Um, I will share that the department heads are in full budget mode. Everyone is working diligently on preparing their budget requests, and I will begin meeting one-on-one with each of the department heads this week, so more to come.
'Tis the season. All right. Okay, I don't see any other department heads with us this evening.
Stacy.
Oh, do you want to cover that? We can cover that. We need the microphone in Stacy's hand if we're going to do it that way. Where is Stacy at? I can't see her.
Hello, Stacy Pillar with Hoover Public Library. I am the interim director in Martha Bowers vacancy. I think our update is that we were in the midst of the hiring process, so hopefully we'll know more about that very soon and have our new director in place.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry blocked my.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, Mayor and Alder Person's Committee Commission Board reports and comments or items for future meetings. Connie Hoppin' John, anything tonight?
Nothing.
All right. Karen Tepley?
Uh, just from tourism. We met and we approved a couple of grants and also approved continuing with Gray Advertising. This is a company that gets all about Richland Center to other parts of our state through streaming media. So we also have the billboards in certain parts of the state, so looking forward to a lot, well, more of a fall presentation of sharing our great community with those in other parts of the state. That's all I have.
Thanks Karen. Tom McCarthy?
Nothing today, Mayor.
You bet. Mark Chambers?
Uh, nothing this evening, sir.
Thank you. Melanie Walters?
Uh, just a couple things. Personnel committee, we are still working on hiring for vacancies within the city. At our last personnel committee, we had received a handful of applications for the public works crew, and so Ashley was going to work on going through those and setting up potential interviews. We're still hiring for a public works director, a zoning administrator, and then from Simons, she was, Tracy, the director, was having a little difficulty getting applicants for a full-time maintenance person, so it was decided at our last meeting that we're going to now do two part-time positions to see if we can get some increased interest, so it'll be a part-time maintenance and a part-time custodial position. And then also from Simons, there has been a group of citizens that has taken it upon themselves, and I commend them. They are working with an attorney to see what the finite details to set up an endowment fund for Simons are, so, and they plan, as they have more information, they'll come back to the Simons committee and report back on that, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Melby?
Nothing tonight.
Steve Downs?
Good night.
And Mr. Ryan Cairns?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to just make an announcement. I got some news, or right when I got to the building tonight, several representatives from the local VFW were here, assigned a proclamation, posed for a photo for Buddy Poppy Day, and they let me know that early this afternoon, Betsy Barbiciotas passed away. And if you don't recognize the name, Betsy is a past president of the VFW Auxiliary. She served in the Women's Relief Corps and was heavily involved in local blood drives for 28 years, so a major contributor to the community loss today, and I thought she earned the mention. Thank you very much. Okay, next on tonight's agenda, treasurer's report.
Okay, this is the treasurer's report for the period ending August 31st, 2023. City general had an ending balance of 295,393. State pool number one had an ending balance of 400, excuse me, 4,838,230. State pool number, let's see, state pool number four, our projects account, had an ending balance of 1,635,917. Couple other accounts of note, library account had an ending balance of 306,929, and room tax had an ending balance of 46,122, and Greater Richland Tourism, ending balance of 25,423. We will make a quarterly transfer from the room tax into the Greater Richland Tourism here the next week or so. So, any questions at all on the treasurer's report?
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. If there are no questions for hearing, entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Walters, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCarthy, any discussion of this item? All right Erin, let's have a roll call, please.
Alder Person, Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Hoppin' John?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up tonight is payment of the bills. Allow a few minutes for the council to review those, then entertain a motion to pay them. The bills presented on this day, excluding any library fund invoices, have been referred to. Having been referred to the Finance and Budget Committee, and said committee having duly investigated and audited these bills hereby make the following recommendation, that the city bills presented on this day be paid with the following adjustments and/or exceptions not listed. It is signed by all three members of the Finance Committee.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Tepley, any discussion of the bills? Hearing none, Erin will need a roll call vote.
Alder Person, McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Hoppin' John?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the item is appointment of the city attorney. So at the last council meeting, I mentioned that Mr. Chris McGowan, who is seated immediately to my left, had contacted me to tell me he would be returning to his native Alabama to join the city business, and we all wished him well, and we still do. What do you have in a box there, Chris?
Looks like an apple pie.
Really?
Of some nature it is.
What does that say, what does that say on the box lid there?
Thank you for everything you've done for the city. You will be missed. Good luck in Alabama, Sean.
Okay. Okay, if you want to hand that down to Mr. Cairns anyways.
I will share this with everyone. You do need to gain some weight, though.
So, thanks for everything.
Thank you all, because I've really enjoyed the experience.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've enjoyed having you here, and so this will be Chris's last meeting with us, correct?
That's correct.
So we'll start here. Keep going, right?
Yeah.
Way to go, Chris.
Man that gave him the job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I was. One of the first things I did as mayor was to bring Chris on board, which brings us to some new business. And the sharp dressed man in the front row over here is Mr. Michael Wendell of the Abswain Law Firm. If that sounds to you a lot like the attorney in the law firm currently representing Richland County, it's because he is and they are. And he is and they are my nomination to be the new city attorney as well, which I have discussed at length with the city administrator, who was thrilled with the news, and talked to several people at the county who congratulated us after Mr. Wendell told me he had interest. So if we could get a microphone to Michael, I would appreciate that. Anything you want to say to introduce yourself, please do so, sir.
Sure. Okay. So my name is Mike Wendell. As the mayor just said, I currently serve as the corporation counsel for Richland County. Our firm also operates as corporation county, uh, counsel for Vernon County as well. I've been licensed in the practice of law for about three years, been with this firm the entire time. The firm consists of myself, Nikki, who is the managing partner, and David, who is the semi-retired farmer slash lawyer who runs the place. He literally founded the firm the year I was born, so what I may lack in experience, I certainly have the opportunity to draw on. I would love to represent the city. For those who may not know, I live here. I have a house in the Allison Park neighborhood. You know, I believe that if I can serve a client that readily improves my community, then that is the best use of my talents. I believe that the law and lawyers are, should be servants, much like yourselves, public servants in this case, and when presented with problems, my first response is usually, how can we do this? And if I'm going to tell you that we can't, I will have a well-researched and thorough answer as to why. Speaking frankly, I went to school to be a prosecutor. I don't get to do any of that in my current role, but I'll get to do some enforcement of ordinances and traffic, and so I'm kind of excited about that. However, I am not taking anything for granted. I am prepared to answer any questions that the council may have for me tonight and would obviously step out of the room if you'd rather take some time to deliberate privately and not have to look at me while you do that.
Okay, so at this point, my nomination to serve as the next city attorney is Mike Wendell of the Abswain Law Firm. If anyone has any questions for him, please ask him now.
Where am I going to get one of those suits? You're showing me up. So this is Indocino. You have to go down the path.
We can talk. It's fun. Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I guess my only question is, considering that you are the corp counsel for Richland County, and if you're nominated or, you know, tonight, then you would be the city attorney for the city of Richland Center. Now, we obviously work jointly on different things. When we're in collaboration, that's great, but there have been circumstances that have arose where we have been in disagreement with each other on certain things. Sometimes it's financial, most of the time. What, how would you resolve that? Because you would be then basically two opposing parties, you're representing both of them.
Uh, so I would absolutely not. It is a massive ethical violation for me to represent two parties with adverse interests in a given matter. So I actually had this conversation with Administrator Olafan, and essentially, it would be on a case-by-case basis. I have considered it ad ling, and either I would alternate which party I would represent in any given conflict matter, or I would try and find a way that I could serve as a mediator or something like that, instead of representing either party's interests. In the example that I thought most readily of, you know, if the county were to pursue action against the city, which I'm not saying anybody contemplating or anything like that, it was just how I worked through problems like this, then I would need to recuse myself from representation in that particular case in the, to the city. I figure they hired me first, so they get first dibs on me for at least the first situation, and then from there, I think it's fair that I alternate. I know that you don't know me as well as the people at the county may, however, I consider myself to be highly ethical and I aspire to be a trustworthy person. I'm going to ask that you put your trust in me to be upfront and honest with you in situations where I don't feel that I can effectively represent the city because of a conflict of my representation with the county. The flip side, of course, being that, for example, the county has appointed me as the representative in discussions with the UW system for the campus. The city has vested interests, I'm sure, in what goes on at that campus, and so you've kind of got a foot in the door there, right, to be appointed without necessarily needing to pay anything extra or appoint a representative of your own. So it certainly facilitates communication. If you're both reviewing a document, it's going to be pretty easy. If I disagree with one or the other, I can be pretty quick, but if I'm drafting it, then I'm going to write it in such a way that there's no concerns there. But it is something that I have considered. We do represent, for example, the city of Westby in Vernon County. So far as I'm aware, we've never encountered a situation where the city and county were at adverse interests, but it was the obvious concern, and it's something that I have given great thought.
So your firm represents Vernon County and Westby, correct?
Yes.
Are we all with you or not?
That's the Hoppins.
Okay. So for just advice going forward to Mr. Wendell and Ashley, Mr. Ben Wood, whose firm operates out of Fenimore and Bosco, Ben has represented Grant County and multiple, I mean six or eight municipalities within that county for multiple years. If there are questions on this point, there's a great resource to ask. He's been doing it that way a long time.
And I mean, I understand the city has a relationship with Orbin Clark. They have an entire municipal practice.
Yep.
They do throughout the state, so it's certainly feasible, so it's going to be a little bit harder when it's just one person, but I believe that I'm capable of managing that and will alert you if I feel I have any concerns on that room.
Does that answer your question, Melanie?
It does, and in fact, Mr. Chris McGowan said almost the same exact thing about Attorney Wendell when I asked him that question.
Great moms think alike.
Yes.
Okay, more questions? Okay, well, Mr. Wendell offered to leave the room. A few folks would like to talk about him when he's not here. Does anyone feel the need to do so? Okay, my nomination is Mr. Michael Wendell. I'll entertain a motion to approve him as the new city attorney.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion from Ms. Tepley, is there a second?
A second.
Second from Mr. Melby, any further discussion?
I guess I can make a comment real quick.
Please do.
I remember when I was telling you that it looked like you wanted to move back to Alabama, and I had a name in mind for the person that should take over, and they made a great impression upon me, and you had already been kind of thinking about, hey, you know, if Chris did end up moving back, you were thinking Mike Wendell as well.
Absolutely.
So we both agreed and were thinking the same person, so.
We were, and as I stated, Ashley loved it when I said it, and then Jason did too, and Jason, if you wouldn't mind, you said something to the two of us the other day about having worked with him when you were representing the county. Your impression?
Yeah, I don't remember exactly what I said, but Michael and I have had a couple of different occasions to work together.
Our first streethouse.
First, yeah, it's the first streethouse as well as 460, or 460 West First as well as Jefferson Street, so those were taken on tax abatement, and we worked together to try to redevelop the kind of process by which the county takes it, so that the property didn't end up with long-term, what's the term, hindrances towards being able to be used as a collateralized when you go to build on it. So anyway, we, we worked through that process, and Michael has always been like super responsive and answered every single question, and I, I'm, I've been amazed and I'm, would be very excited if he was here to, to replace Mr. McGowan, who's also been excellent, so.
There you go. Did you have one?
One last thing. To quote Billy Jones, "Mike knows a lot about a lot." Is that accurate? That's accurate, yep.
You can print that, Eric. That's pretty deep stuff for me. Okay, so we have the motion and the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll need a roll call, Mr. Joyce.
Alder Person, Chambers?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Melby? Walters, sorry?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Hoppin' John?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Wendell, and at this point, it's a point out, new guy brings the pizza. All right. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you again, Mr. McGowan.
Well, shall I go sit?
Yeah, we'll sweep and bring Michael. No.
You've got to go, Mike.
It's old, you might as well.
He looks like he wants to be out of here. Just stay. Go ahead, go ahead. No, you've finished the meeting, Chris.
Time's out of that since until winter starts now.
Yeah, yeah. Right, and we are all invited to Alabama in January.
You've got a friend.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda, Finance Committee recommendations in action, Mr. Ryan Cairns.
Item five, request to authorize transportation planning services.
Sometimes you want us, you want me to summarize this?
Yes.
All right. So we had this before Finance. Finance approved of the recommendation to consult with MSA in the amount of 30,300 for traffic impact study on Highway 14 between Bowman Drive and Highway 58. This deals with, of course, or is considering the fact that we've got the hospital likely coming to the east side of Richland Center, as well as the fact that a lot of the viably developable land is also in that direction, and we already have kind of traffic congestion issues on Highway 14 in several places. So we felt this was an opportune time to engage in a traffic impact study that will consider things like future land use and will also provide conceptual recommendations for the improvement of Highway 14. So at Finance, they approved the motion to contract with MSA for transportation planning services for Highway 14 between Bowman Drive and Highway 58 North at a cost not to exceed $31,000, and that's our request for council as well.
Um, that will be my motion. Mr. Joyce, did you get it?
I can't.
Mr. Glassburn, here with you.
Yeah, it's printed right on your agenda cover sheet.
Okay, just the way it's phrased.
A mo- motion to authorize contracting with MSA for transportation planning services for Highway 14 between Bowman Drive and Highway 58 North at a cost not to exceed $31,000.
Okay, and we have the motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs, okay, any discussion on this point?
I think everybody should take the time to read through the fifty-some pages in the packet.
Two hundred or something.
Oh, just on this portion.
Oh, sure. The whole packet is over 200. Um, Jason, could you just, I don't know if, I thought it was helpful at Finance, if you or Ashley could just explain why you guys determined that MSA was the best ones to go with? I think that was helpful information to have.
Yes, so what was stated at Finance was that we do have a longstanding history with MSA. They're very familiar with the city. They're actively involved in the current street, street project that we have going on and also have done work in the past along the Highway 14 corridor, so they're very well acquainted with the city, and that's of value to us, and although we don't know for sure, but it could develop into potential cost savings in this project because of the work that they've done with us. Additionally, which is contrary to the argument we heard from Mr. Wendell previously, with the hospital being represented, represented by the other firm that provided a proposal for this project, we believe it's in the best interest of the city to find and, and work with a firm that is not also being representative of the hospital, because it may be that we have contrary interests or desires within this project, and, and the hospital will be looking at what they need to do as part of their study or their analysis to get approval from the DOT would be far different than what the city's looking at in this, which is a long-term planning, considering traffic beyond just the hospital. So we don't want to be in a position where perhaps the firm wouldn't be solely considering what the interests or the desires of the city are, but rather balancing that with what the hospital's interests are. Thank you.
Some more further information that I think I should share at this point. Last week, leadership from our hospital met with representatives of the USDA at Mr. Bruce Raisler's invitation. I posed present at that meeting, and for anyone who doesn't know, the vast majority of the funding for the $115 million hospital, approximately 80 million of that 115, would be coming from the USDA in a low interest loan, and so it was a critically important meeting, and several times in that meeting, the representatives from the USDA talked about further development of US 14. Could the, could the highway handle it? The hospital stated moving down there would put an additional 450 vehicles a day down the Highway 14 corridor, which is already our busiest stretch, and then what might want to follow? You know, would there be businesses, homes, whatever? And so Matt from Veerbicker was in the room, and he pointed out first to the USDA that the city was looking at doing this traffic study, and then I gave them some detail, and they were very happy to hear that. They consider it necessary as well, you know, just looking at, when they walked that site down there, and they were very happy to hear that this was being done. That's what I had. Is there anything else on this point? Okay, we have the motion and the second, we need a roll call.
Alder Person, Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Hoppin' John?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six, request to authorize financial management services. Item six, Request to Authorize Financial Management Services. Ashley, would you like to give a brief overview before I make a motion?
Sure. So, this is a continuation of the discussion that's been had by council over the last couple of months, and the request tonight is to pursue consulting or contracting with Southwestern Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission with Misty, the Local Government Services Specialist, who's sitting in the crowd for us right now, to begin the process. So, foundational work to help review our policies, procedures, our accounting, to provide training to staff for our accounting program, and to really set the stage, so that way we're able to enter into a larger or perhaps more comprehensive financial management plan or strategic advisory services with a firm. In your packets, you do have attachments that are the proposals from four firms that we did communicate with. We're going to, if approved, this step, we will continue communicating with those firms we've received proposals from to refine or potentially re-scope the services that we're looking for, but it was determined that this is a necessary first step to get us in a position to really maximize the value of a full financial management plan that we're pursuing.
Thank you. My motion would be to authorize Administrator to contract with Southwestern Regional Planning Commission for the services of the Local Government Services Specialist for financial planning purposes at a cost not to exceed $15,000 for pool four outlay.
Came motion by Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Hop and John. Mr. Glassbringer, I saw you grabbed the microphone.
Yeah, if it's okay, I'd like to ask Misty to share again what she did with Finance. It's just, she's got a great history of how Southwest Regional Planning has worked with us, and so if that's all right, I'd hand it to her.
Certainly.
I think she made it correct.
That's right.
So, a little about, excuse me, a little bit about our organization. Southwestern Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission is your regional partner. We're actually governed by state statutes. We were founded in the early 1970s and have been around for over 50 years. And so, we cover a five-county region, we cover Grant, Green, Iowa, Richland, and Lafayette County, and we're here working with the county, we're here working with other municipalities throughout the county. And again, we're your regional partner, so we're a not-for-profit agency who's here to help fill in the gaps where needed, which is why I was hired as the Local Government Services Specialist. So, I've got about 20 years in government background between a utility clerk, clerk treasurer, and a city administrator. And so, we brought me in to kind of fill in the gap and help communities, because we know that there's a lot of communities in the region who are green, as Ashley said earlier. There's a lot of turnover, there's a lot of people who were in their positions for 30, 40 years and are starting to retire now, or have retired the last couple of years. So, and we're looking forward to that. We've worked with Richland Center in many aspects. In 2021, we actually recommended hiring a city administrator to fill in some gaps that were needed here in Richland Center, and we're looking forward to working with you to make sure that that's a successful role in this community.
Thank you, Misty. Okay, anything further, Jason? All right, we have motion and the second, is there further discussion on this point? Okay, we'll have a roll call, Mr. Joyce.
Alderperson, Melby.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Hop and John.
Aye.
Tebley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda, Public Safety Committee Recommendations in Action, Mr. Kevin Melby.
All right, Public Safety met earlier this evening. On the agenda tonight are two temporary licenses. A first one on the agenda is for the Hispanic Heritage Day, which will be September 16th, from 10:00 AM until 9:00 PM at 9:15 North Orange Street, held by the Greater Richland Area Chamber of Commerce. Make a motion to approve the temporary Class B picnic license.
Okay, motion by Mr. Melby, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Chambers, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving a temporary Class B picnic license application for the Richland Area Chamber for Hispanic Heritage Day, 9/16/23. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
All right, item number eight, Temporary Class B Picnic License for the St. Mary's Festival on the same date, to be held on the St. Mary's grounds. So, my motion is to approve the Class B picnic license for St. Mary's Parish Festival on September 16th.
Motion from Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Downs, any discussion on this point?
Just one question. I noticed the fee is different on this one compared to the one we just approved.
That was a, an error in the office that we will correct.
Just to know if that was a different classification.
Which one's correct?
$10.
There we go. Thanks, Karen.
Sure.
Anything further?
No.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. If there is no more discussion, all in favor of approving the temporary Class B picnic license application for St. Mary's Parish for Parish Festival, 9/16/23. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Next is appointments to committees, commissions, board, and confirm appointments. There are none tonight. There will be one at the next meeting. Brings us to public comment, no council action will be taken on any matter originating under this item. I've not been made aware of anyone who wants to address the council, is there anyone who would like to do so? Bob, Heidi, did you have something to say? See, you're talking to each other about it. Did you have something you want to tell us?
Well, I'm just so happy that my husband took over for Betsy as coordinator, if anybody does not know that. We're looking for help for our Red Cross, we're looking for help at the computer, kitchen, and on the floor. Anybody that would like to contact Bob, (608) 475-0621, and he would appreciate it if people would like to call and help at our blood drive, and our blood drive is September 20th.
Okay, September 20th, at the Community Center?
Community Center, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, guys. Anything further?
Nope.
The only thing I have to say is the volunteers do not have to stay all day. They can, if they want to work just an hour, that's fine.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the council tonight? Okay, hearing none, that brings us to the last item on tonight's agenda, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.